This is the September 8th Planning Commission Meeting. First item on the agenda is the consideration of the eight for Planning Commission Meeting minutes. So everyone had a chance to take a look at those? Any comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the August 4th Council Commission Meeting. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Second item, consider a preliminary plat for Burns addition. Oh, you want to walk us through this one, Justin?
Yeah, this is a pretty simple one. The only request that the city has is that Planning Commission would waive the sidewalk on the second side. Otherwise, the applicant and the has met all of our requirements unless there's something that you guys would like to add to it.
Is the applicant here?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I just had one question. Where the cul-de-sac is for which Wedgewood Place?
Uh huh.
Is that all street right away then? That's all?
Yes.
Okay. I couldn't really tell by the lines.
Yep.
That's the only question I had. Anyone have any other questions or comments?
Be nice to get that developed.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the acceptance of the preliminary plat for Burns addition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for Burns addition.
We need a waiver on the sidewalk.
Oh.
I would include that in my motion.
I will second that motion.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat with the waiver for the sidewalk for Burns addition. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, consider a preliminary plat for the fairways addition. I will recuse myself and Arlen will take it from here.
Yeah, Justin, you want to step us through this one?
Yeah, same thing. We've been with the, working with the engineer. They do have another submittal after the date that the memo was put together and all these have been, I believe, addressed other than some crossings that we are looking to have more access for sewer purposes. But otherwise, it's also been, we're happy with the preliminary plat on this one as well. Unless there's anything that you guys would like to add, we would move to approve.
Is the applicant here?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners Lance Onstop, Professional Engineering Consultants 303, South Topeka, Agent on behalf of the applicant. So plat before you for your consideration is a single-family development, so obviously we've been working through staff on preparing the preliminary plat. So a couple of the things that I just want to make sure we leave on the same page. So the way that we have the utilities conceptually drawn on this is that both the water and the sewer will be fed from the front, which limits us a little bit from the sidewalk. So much like very previously, the previous case. Instead of showing sidewalks on both sides of the street, what we've included is sidewalks on one side of the street and then we've also included a public sidewalk that kind of goes through the reserve. So instead of having it on both sides of the sidewalk, we thought providing, and you can see it in red here, projected and in your packet, but we thought providing an off-street sidewalk trail system connecting to the south and to the north was the best fit for this particular development. So obviously with 70 single-family lots, we will, it is proposed that this will be a multiple-phase development. We'll build the connection, the roadway connection to the north and to the south and then start on the west because that's where the available sewer is. Again, here you can see it projected in red. And then that east side will be the second phase. So happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Commissioners, anybody have any questions for him? Thank you. Anybody have any additional questions for staff? I would entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
Make a motion, we approve the preliminary plat for the fairways addition. Second.
Do we need to say anything about sidewalks on one side or because just the way the plat's written, everybody's okay with that?
We were good with the way.
Nothing more than said.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for the fairways. Any other discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. I'll turn it back over.
You want to keep going?
Nope, I'll turn it back over.
You did such a fine job. Okay, next item on the agenda, consider a variance for 1003 South Pine. This is you, Justin.
Yep. So we have a variance for an accessory structure from the 800 square feet or 10% of the lot. And if this is approved, they would be able to do approximately 458 square feet over the maximum allowable. So we'll go through the, each of the items. So explain how the variance request arises from such conditions, which is unique to the property in question and which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner or applicant. The applicant commentary, the original pole barn garage 30 by 50 by 10 was a building on 7514. On 61425, a fire damaged the structure. I plan on rebuilding the structure plus add an addition of 20 by 30 to eliminate two small sheds. This will create less clutter on the back of the yard with one structure that's 30 by 70 by 12. Explain how the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of the adjacent property owners or residents. The garage in the addition is not an eyesore. It is located in the backyard with a privacy fence surrounding the structure. C, explain how the strict application of the provisions of the zoning regulation of which the variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application. Applicant commentary, the garage meets the required zoning regulations and is within its boundaries. Explain how the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. The applicant commentary on this one, the structure will be constructed with all new material built by a licensed contractor. E, explain how the variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of the zoning regulations. The applicant commentary, the garage caught fire 61425, the structure will be demolished and the new structure and addition added all meeting the city's zoning regulations. A variance cannot be granted if even one of the above conditions is not met. Variances are not for correcting mistakes that cause the property to come into non-compliance with the particular code requirement. Variances are not for situations where complying with a particular code requirement is inconvenient or more expensive. If the variance is granted, at 1003 South Pine would be allowed to construct a 70 by 30 detached garage, which is 458 square feet over the maximum allowable. Recommendation, the Planning Commission can either approve, deny, or reduce the variance setback.
Any questions for Justin?
I had one on the requirement of 458 plus or minus square feet. Is that based on lot size then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What were the size of the two smaller sheds? Do we know?
Eight by 12s.
Eight by 12s? You want to come up? You're the applicant, I assume? Yeah, come on up. State your name and address, please.
Dennis Stassen, 1003 South Pine.
And what was the size of both the two smaller sheds that'll be eliminated?
Eight by 12.
Okay. There's 200 of that.
So Justin, other than, other than just the square footage size, it meets all their side setbacks, rear setbacks, everything else. It does fit on the lot.
Correct.
It's just the square footage of the...
Correct, it's over the 10%.
Over the 10% of the lot size.
Correct. Yep. Bear with us for a second. There's a lot of stuff in here. Justin, I had another question for you. So this is one, one structure. And I'm just wondering, just for my, my information, but like if these were two different structures, like the storage and the shop are different structures?
It would still be 10% of the lot for accessory structures.
For the total?
Correct.
Total size?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant or for staff? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the, the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this matter? Wow, all the people, I figured someone was here. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, so we will go through these items one by one. Don't know that I need to re-read all the things Justin just read. So based on A, explain how the variance request arises from a condition which is unique. Is there any comments on that specific, specific item?
It's definitely unique, but...
Yeah. Yeah, and just reminding the commission, the variance has to be, can be granted with, all these things have to apply though, have to, all the conditions have to be met.
So with the old buildings being torn down, the new one added at approximately 450, 458 plus more feet, taking down the 192 from the other sheds, only like 266 square feet more. Okay.
Yeah.
That, those wouldn't be a part of that number. Even if those gone, it's still 458 over.
458, okay.
Yep.
So those do not count towards...
Correct.
So you could build 14 of those.
Yes.
So this, this 10% rule has been around since the beginning of time or...
More than 16 years, I can tell you that. It's been on the books, so.
Yeah, it's a normal requirement.
When you say normal, normal compared to what?
Other cities. It's similar to other cities.
About 10%?
Yeah. I guess the, the item A is set, is, there has to be something unique or we're setting a precedence. And I don't know that we want to change this rule for every property that comes forth with, I mean, because then we're going to have a lot of large sheds we're considering in the future.
Would it be considered unique because it had a fire in a, in a building that was already on the property? We use that?
Yeah, somewhat, yeah.
And that we're, as he's trying to clean up now, you know, we had one building plus two other ones, probably wouldn't have done anything had you not had the fire. It may, would have stayed that way. I mean, so now we're trying to correct, I mean, we're not correcting a, something wrong with the zoning, but you're trying to clean up.
The, the fire extinguished itself. It just damaged the raptors and the contractor said that and the insurance company said it'd have to be demolished and rebuilt. And I just thought it'd be a good idea to get rid of this, the two outbuildings and add a, an additional structure onto it for the lawn mowers and, and whatnot. The building has been demolished.
Oh, it is currently?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Hopefully you won't have to get up again. Okay, let's move to item B. Explain how the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of the adjacent property owners. Garage addition are not an eyesore. I tried to look at this on Google Maps, but there's so many trees and stuff, it's hard to even see back there. So I don't think the aesthetics of it would necessarily be a gigantic concern. Any other comments on item B?
I would think, I mean, it's been, something has been there in the past, so I would think if it's been a nuisance to the neighborhood, they'd be here.
Yeah.
They tend to show up for other things I think are nuisances, so I would think they would be here if that was the case.
Okay, item C, we'll move on. Explain how strict application of the provisions of the zoning regs, which variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship. And the comment is, the garage meets the required zoning regs and is within its boundaries.
But it doesn't really meet the zoning requirements.
But it doesn't meet or does it?
Yes. It doesn't meet the...
It does not, yeah. Okay, item D, explain how the variance desired will not adversely affect public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. And the comment is, the structure will be constructed with all new material by a licensed I don't see that it would adversely affect that.
No problem there.
And item E, explain how the variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of the zoning regs.
That's the one.
That's the one, right. And then a variance cannot be granted if even one of the above conditions is not met. If we're in concurrence that all those conditions aren't met.
Unfortunately, yeah.
So I have a motion to that matter, to that extent.
To deny?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we deny the request for variance based on the application not meeting all the requirements, the standards for granting the variance.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the variance request for 1003 South Pine. All in favor, say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is, consider a zoning amendment for 2903 South Kansas Avenue. Is this Byrne? Sishy Byrne?
Yes. So this comes from this governing body as a precursor for the applicants who are originally seeking for annexation of the land, but before annexation can be considered, zoning must be ruled upon and considered. So with three applicants, Craig Sado, Rita Hernandez, and Francisco Delgado are looking to have an amendment ruled here today at the location 2903 South Kansas. And this governing body, oh, before I get to that, the two, so the applicants are looking for, to have their property here zoned from rural, single-family residential district to a single-family dwelling district. And there are five points of criteria that the Planning Commission has to rule here upon, and each one needs to be considered according to Article 1, Section 1.10-4, Section D, Point 1. And let me see here, once the Planning Commission has voted and agreed whether to approve or deny this application, that will be sent over to the City Commission for consideration at the September 23rd meeting. Thank you.
Okay, so any, any questions for Byrne or other staff? Okay, let's go through the criteria one by one. Whether the change in classification would be consistent with the intent and purpose of these regs with the city's adopted comp plan and other adopted city policies, plans, programs, ordinances, rules, and regulations. Let's see, staff comments, when considering changes zoning, classification for any piece of property, it's necessary to consider whether every use that would be permitted under the requested classification would be appropriate for that property in the surrounding areas and not just focus on the use the applicant indicates. This is because there's no way to prevent the applicant or any future owner of the property from using the site for any other uses other than permitted under the requested classification. In other words, the use of a property may not be restricted to the particular use contemplated or in existence when the request is made. It may include any use allowed within that zoning classification. I believe it's within the intent...
Agreed.
...to be attached. Everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on. B, whether every use that would be permitted on the property, if it were reclassified, would be compatible with the uses permitted on other property located in the immediate vicinity. I think that's pretty obvious, yes.
So just to clarify on the map, so everything in yellow is still in the county. Everything in the green is still in the county. But so the, the property that's in between the green and the yellow, that is in the city already? And of course, the other side of the street's in the city, but what about that property?
Like right here, is that what you're talking about?
Pardon?
Are you talking about this one right here and here?
Between the green and the yellow, yeah, on the left side of Kansas.
That's in the city.
That's in the city?
Yep.
Okay, just making sure.
The yellow and the green are not?
Because, the reason I'm trying to make sure is because the, the land of the south of the green, that's not in the city yet, is it?
No.
Okay, so that's why I was confused by the mapping colors is, it's not all, everything that's not in colored is, does not mean it's in the city.
Correct.
I'm just try, okay.
Yeah, and it will be annexed, they're going in front of the City Commission for annexation as well, so.
Okay.
And I think the answer to be, there's already a house there, so it's our ones...
Knowing that, yes, then, then I agree.
Right, okay. Any other comments on B? Moving on. Item C, whether adequate sewer and water facilities and all the needed public services exist or can be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the property. There's a water line on the west side or on the east side and a sanitary sewer on the west side. So staff comments, public utilities exist adjacent to the site. So any other, any comments on C? Okay. Item D, whether the proposed amendment would correct an error in the application of these regulations. Staff was not aware of any, any errors. Any comments on that?
Nope, all good.
And E, whether the proposed amendment is made necessary because of changed or changing conditions in the area affected, and if so, the nature of such change or changing conditions, and whether the proposed amendment provides disproportionately greater loss to the individual landowner relative to public gain. I think there's already a house there, so...
Yeah.
I don't see any...
Town's ruined that way.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments? Now, we do need a public hearing for this, correct? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? No? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments? For a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the zoning change for 2903 South Kansas Avenue.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the zoning amendment for 2903 South Kansas Avenue. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, next item, consider a request for variance of the 2018 IBC for project at 518 North Main. You want to start this? Or do you want me to go through the...
If I would ask that you'd go through...
Yeah, we could go ahead and go through. No reason to do it twice. Okay, this was the recent, did everyone have a chance to look at this?
I did.
Okay, since it was sent out a little late. Okay, well, first off, is there someone from the applicant here to... Okay, you want to come on up? State your name and address.
Greg Knoll, the Executive Pastor at the Gathering, 920 Country Lane.
Jordan Volker, the Contractor, Excat Construction.
Brandon Eck, Lead Pastor at the Gathering.
You guys want to give us some background on it? Do you have anything to...
Yeah, most of it's contained in the material the architect put together for us, but the need for the variance, how that's come relevant to us is, as we continue to grow as a church, we have more and more people that we are no longer able to provide all the different kinds of gathering space that we need. The auditorium at the Fox Theater being a, our largest piece of property, but with the sloped floor, is not able to have small groups in that space because of that flooring. You can't table and chair kinds of meetings. And so the, we want to continue the tiering or the terracing of that floor that was begun almost nine years ago, the first tier we put in then, that was approved. And we want to just add two more tiers. But what we've run into because of the tiers that we're wanting to put in, you're limited by this code to how many chairs you can have that are not fixed chairs to the floor. And for the nine, 10 years we've been in there, we've just used stacked chairs. We have around 275 in there today.
Stacked chairs that you just, they're stacked up and then you just...
Similar, similar to these chairs that stack and lock together.
Okay. Yeah, and so what we're looking to do, the variance would keep us from being able to do that, or not the variance, that would allow us to do that. The code would limit our ability to continue to serve a growing church family. And so, yeah, that's our proposal, is to add two more tiers. Our contractor is going to be a part of that, but we're limited being able to go forward amongst other things by this current code that's in place.
So just before you sit down, the fixed chairs, so they're not, they're movable, right? So they're, I don't know if, and we'll get into that in a second, but, so if, they are movable, so I don't know if the code, if that's a code requirement that they are permanently fixed or out.
That's our understanding.
That is correct. Okay, yeah, so that's, I wanted to know.
Thank you. Yeah, yes.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, and I think what we're trying to point out is, they're not folding chairs. I could be wrong about the code, but it seems like it's more aimed at chairs that could scatter in the midst of an emergency. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but you lock the chairs together, rows of there, they're not scattering in the case of an emergency. I mean, so while not fixed at the floor, they are fixed together.
The hooks on the side?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. We do discuss that in one of the sections in the writing that you have from the architect. Is there anything there that, clearly I think the concern is, are people able to get in and out? Safety, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, for sure.
I think it's the main, primary concern. I can't speak for other people here, but we do think, you'll see it there, and the architect believes, the contractor believes that with the exits that we have in the back of the building and in the front of the building, as well as the modifications we're making to the room itself, actually facilitate emergency exits in a way that's an improvement.
So for such a law, I just have a, one of my questions that...
Yes.
So such a large area, why don't you just put fixed chairs in there?
Because our need is for fl... Because our need is for flexibility, multipurpose use.
Okay, you don't have other rooms to do that or anything? I just wondered.
No, not adequate space, we're, yeah, growing, running out, we, we maximize both buildings that we have. Yeah.
So, maybe I'm wrong, but if, if you're talking about trying to make it mixed use, that would mean there's going to be, my, I envision then there's going to be times where you'll have chairs stacked up on the side, and you'll have tables set out in the middle with chair, are, are.
Less than, but less than 200, I mean, we can, yeah, we can, if they're not fixed together as we do tables, I mean, we could, yeah, tables and chairs, does that make, we're going to have small groups during the week. So, yeah, we will take apart the chairs, stack chairs in appropriate places, we can store the chairs, but then during the week for small groups, we want to have multiple small groups, let's say, handful of tables out on those tiers with chairs around them. But at that point, there wouldn't be over 200 chairs on the floor.
With the, with the spacing of the tables, I think the way Michael has it drawn up is that it, you know, there wouldn't be enough seats around the tables to, to go over the, the allowable limit of the room.
And there's adequate storage space in other places in the building, not in fire lanes for the extra chairs?
Correct.
Yeah, I hope that makes sense. So, on Sunday, we might have 220 chairs out on the floor in a classic rows of chairs. And then Monday through Thursday or Friday, we'll reset that room to table and chairs format on various level tiers that we would be starting.
But again, less than 200.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Not for them, I think.
Okay, yeah, we can ask staff. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Please. Yeah, if you want to start, go ahead.
My question's going to go back to the people that know more than me about fire escapes and how to get in, how to get out. What, what's your guys' thoughts?
I mean, the code's pretty clear that 200, in an assembly occupancy, if you have more than 200 chairs, it's supposed to be attached permanently affixed to the floor. I understand that they want to connect them together, but the code still says even connecting them together is not supposed to be done on a tiered floor. That's supposed to be on a straight floor only, that's the way convention centers, that's how convention centers can do it, because they don't have tiered floors. The code doesn't, the code just wants you to have 200 or less chairs to, to have an exemption from being fixed. Anything over 200 chairs should be fixed to the floor.
Over 200?
Yeah, anything over 200. So, anything less than 200 would not be required to be fixed to the floor?
And then the.
Anything over that would be required to be fixed to the floor permanently.
So, the tiering would be okay, 199 and under or 200 and under?
199 would be.
199 and under?
200 would be fine. So, the code, actually, the code specifically says 200 or less.
Okay.
So.
So, the commentary under item C here says, the original plan was for fixed seating, 114 fixed seats. When did this go from fixed seating to?
This is the, this is a plan drawing from the 2015 remodel.
Okay.
So, in the 2015 remodel, it was supposed to have fixed seating.
So, that's when the top tier.
Somewhere in between 2015 and now, we've taken all the fixed seating out.
Okay.
Not sure where they, when that happened. But this was from the 2015 permit, that was approved, and it was supposed to have fixed seating. So, at the time, this would have been code compliant. But now that we've put tables and now we've, now we've put more chairs there, it's technically no longer code compliant.
Just curious, was that code on the book in 2015 or because it said 2018?
It was in the 2012, it was, it goes back as far as 2012, it's probably before the 2012, it was in there too. So, I'm not sure why, well, this would have been approved back then because you would have had less than 200 chairs in the main area. And the only thing, the only tiered floor had only those small amount of tables and chairs. Now, we're going to put more tiers in there, and for that reason, it should come to today's code.
Is there like a maximum occupancy limit for the building, occupancy limit?
Do you know what that number is, Andy?
And there, there is no sprinkler in the big room, in the auditorium currently?
And that's not a code requirement for the size, sprinkler requirement?
Yeah, it is.
Potentially, yeah, yeah, it's requiring, yeah.
Okay.
And we, so there's, there's not sprinklers?
There's not, we've always heard the word used grandfathered in. It was not even when we got the building. And it's, I think concerning, I may not say this correctly, Andy, so correct me, but as long as we were under 300 people and had a plan for exiting in an emergency and had fire extinguishers or something like that, we would continue under that of being grandfathered in without the sprinkler. It is fully our intent in our next phase, which is a little bit further out yet to put it, we talked a lot about Andy, with Andy, about putting in the sprinkler system as part of our very next phase. That's on our plans that we've submitted even before this is, project we've got forward now.
Consulted Andy before we've been, put this to the city.
The language here says if this variance is granted, 518 North Main will be allowed to have 299 chairs and two for the sound booth, which is more than 300 chairs if we would do that. So, I, I don't know how that plays with this 300 number, which isn't a number I've seen anywhere else, but.
We, we cannot have a 300 chairs, I mean, you know, if we need 299 or whatever, we're not, we don't have that difficult.
So, looking at the drawings, right now, it's drawn to have a maximum occupancy of 301 chairs in the auditorium. Up to 90 people on the stage. Again, with, with looking at the code, so you look at what is max capacity, the code is based off of max capacity. Not that you're going to do that, because 90 people on that stage would be crazy. But, so you're looking at maximum occupancy. So, this would put them into the, the realm of needing sprinklers. You know, and looking at the phases and where people are at, it, it puts, it's right in that area that it's kind of in there. So, right now, they're grandfathered in, they're existing non-conforming. They're, they were approved in 2015 with that setup. I think that's the 2015 drawing, isn't it?
2015 drawing.
So, they're existing non-conforming. The code kicks in then when you renovate or update and bring it up. And so, we're right in that realm of, of when does that kick in and when do you have to do that?
Yeah.
Which could be something that's looked at in the big picture. For tiered floors.
But isn't it a certain percentage of the remodel? I mean, so if he's just terracing the floors, wouldn't that, you know, we're not doing electrical out there, we're not doing anything. Only I E B C, you mentioned, is 50 percent. So. This is being asked to be run through the I E B C, so we're running this through the I V C, so any changes, any changes would have to meet the current code.
This one's a little rougher, we're, we, I feel like I'd love to help, but I also don't want to put the public at risk. And I'm sure you don't want to put the public at risk either. But if we were doing this the other way around, and you were up here asking for sprinklers, and then we're going to do the tiered thing. With, I might be able to see, you know what I mean? That it would make more sense that other direction, I realize the dollars amount is the big point on when you start talking about sprinkling it. Yeah, I, I get it, I, I understand.
Justin, another question, these plans here? What are those from, are those the old plans then? They had all the revision dates?
Yes, that would be from the 2015 approval.
Okay, I just want to make sure of that.
If you switch to your Historic Preservation Commission packet, you'll have the updated plans as well.
I got too many papers up here.
You'll be addressing this.
And that might be what you're looking at, too.
Yeah, you might have.
All the 11 by 17s, but that main one that you just showed me on the front papers?
That's the, yeah, the one.
We included both the previously approved interior remodel plans for comparison's sake.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for staff at this point? I think we need to go through these items, just like the previous variance request, one by one. Okay, so, item A, I will read these fully. Explain how the variance request arises from such condition which is unique to the structure in question, which were not created by an illegal action of the owner, tenant or contractor. Commentary from the applicant, the variance request arose because of the church's need for non-slope, multipurpose floor, floor space in the auditorium to best, best utilize a room for different types of gatherings. The space, as you know, is existing, so the size was determined many years ago. We are simply proposing to modify the sloped floor into a tiered floor system in order to have the ability to use like chairs and table while maintaining correct viewing angles to the stage area for the church services and other presentation type meetings. Flattening of the floors has not been done yet, and no other illegal action by the owner has been done to this point. Staff commentary, because we are not using I E B C, the change of the proposed floor arrangement and design will require you to come into compliance with current adopted codes. Okay, and I think we all agree with that.
We all agree, yeah.
Item B, explain how the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of the adjacent property owners or residents. Applicant commentary, this modification to the building is internal only and will not affect neighboring properties. Staff commentary, this could affect neighboring properties for parking, although parking on Main Street is limited, it can cause congestion before, during and after events, making parking for other businesses along Main Street difficult. I do have an overall quick, can you step back up here for a second? So. And we might be doing this a little bit to get through these questions.
Sure, sure.
So, for parking, has there been a parking evaluation based on the number of, has the architect looked at number of parking stalls needed for, how many people you plan to have here? Have they looked at anything for parking?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, I just wondered that. Any other questions on this one?
On parking, it's on a Sunday, no one's downtown anyway, so.
Yeah, well.
But, but if you start doing events.
Right, right.
Then he does, it could affect.
But I mean, I mean, it was also a movie theater at one time that had more, I mean, more capacity than what the church has at this point, I mean.
Yeah, but no, no one went to the movies back then. Because I.
Everybody goes down.
I went to the Titanic there.
No, good point, yeah. Thank you. Okay, any other questions on that one?
Not on that one.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to the next one. Item C, explain how strict application of the provisions of the I B C, I R C of which variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon, upon the property owner represented in the application. Applicant commentary, per I B C, only 200 unfixed chairs are allowed to be located in a tiered assembly space. Church, church currently has 275 unaffixed chairs in the room, which has a, has one tiered floor section, previously approved and permitted, and a sloped floor section. This project is predicated on allowing for a more diverse air, use of the room, either in a lecture type seating arrangement or tables and chairs type arrangement. Project will not move forward without the variance approval because of the need for a multipurpose use of the room. Staff commentary, the original plan was for fixed seating, 114 fixed seats. The configuration mentioned was never properly permitted. This should not be allowed to continue for the safety of the public. Any questions, comments on that? Okay. Yeah, safety is, I think, all, everyone's concerned, so. We'll move on to items, item D. Explain how the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity or general welfare. Applicant commentary, both seating arrangements can be seen on the, on the drawings, either on the code plan sheet C D or floor plan sheet A 1.1. As mentioned above, the church currently has 275 chairs in the auditorium and has operated that way for a number of years. The discrepancy between their current layout and that of the floor plan designated 301 chairs is likely due to tighter row spacing on the submitted floor plan. The church doesn't necessarily intend to add more chairs, but the plan shows that they could if needed. Current chairs are the type that can be locked together, single rows, most likely the code limitation of 200 is predicated on the scattering of chairs that may occur in emergency event, thus blocking clear egress for occupants or ingress for firefighters, emergency workers. These locking mechanisms on the chairs will be utilized for each row, which will effectively eliminate the scattering, scattering of individual chairs and allow for ingress, egress needed. The room has adequate, adequate egress for more than 300 occupants, which has been enhanced by the proposed reconfiguration of the, front of the stage. It's my opinion that the chairs being locked in rows and the abundance of egress points will not adversely affect public safety or general welfare of the occupants or the emergency workers. Staff commentary, the most recent approved plans show the chairs as being attached. It's unclear when the seats were changed from attached to their current configuration. Using unattached chairs on a sloped or tiered surface poses a risk to both occupants and firefighters. The danger in this building is heightened due to the lack of fire suppression system. According to the code, the minimum requirement is a combination of fixed seating and a fire suppression system to ensure safety. Safety is the city's top priority, and there is a reason, a reason the code limits this type of configuration. Issues have arisen when occupancy exceeds 200, and the code ensures the number of exits remain adequate for, for safe evacuation in an emergency. Any questions or comments about item D? Okay. Item E, last. Getting tired of reading. Explain how the variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of the I B C, I R C code. Applicant commentary, please see my comments on item four. As I mentioned, the general, general spirit and intent of I B C is to protect the lives of occupants, emergency workers in, in an emergency situation. The use of lockable chairs and the changes to the egress pattern of the stage side of the auditorium are methods by which the new design will enhance or overcome the spirit and intent of the code requirements. Staff commentary, the intent of the code is to prevent paths of egress from being blocked in an emergency when people are exiting or during fire operations. The use of non-fixed seating allows for the space to be used in a flex capacity. In the event of a fire, an occupant or firefighter could be, become trapped by chairs, even those that are interconnected. A variance cannot be granted if one of the, oh, this is the, the rest of it, a variance cannot be granted if, if even one of the above conditions are not met, like we mentioned before in the previous one. Okay, so, does anyone have any other questions for the applicant at this point?
I just have a question for staff. In the staff commentary on page 68, it talks about. Unattached chairs on sloped or tiered surfaces. So, regardless, you can't have unattached chairs? Is that what you're telling me?
If you're less than 200, you can have unattached chairs. Anything over 200 is supposed to be attached tiered.
To the floor or to each other?
Unless you have a flat floor.
A straight, flat.
To the floor.
Can't be sloped. Yeah. Has to be a straight, flat floor in order to be, in order to get an exemption from the 200 chairs. Thank you.
Just one other question, just to ask, I probably know the answer to this, but basically, if you have 200 fixed chairs, are you allowed any non-fixed chairs? Is the maximum 200 then total?
I mean, if you attach, in this, in this situation, they could attach 101 of them if, if they, if the variance is approved, they could attach 101 of them and then have 200, less than 200 left.
Not considering the variance, so say they go in, they want to put two hundred fixed chairs in, would they be allowed a certain number of, of folding chairs or whatever?
Yes.
Okay, do you know what that number might?
So that, it doesn't reach, it doesn't require fixed chairs until you reach two hundred. So you can have a hundred and ninety-nine chairs and not have them fixed to the floor, but as soon as you go over two hundred, the code requires them to be fixed to the floor.
Yeah, so the answer is no, essentially. They can't have, they can't have, they can't have unaffected chairs if they're over two hundred chairs total.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for the applicants?
So you guys are planning on having under two hundred chairs in there?
We wouldn't have enough seats for our church families it is today, if we do that. We're already at multiple services, to try to keep, and not to try to keep the number down, but to keep it down from what it would be if you're just a single service. We couldn't do a single service. We'd be over two hundred in just one service right now. I, I do think, if it's okay to speak, about some of the comments, we started by having, inviting conversation about the egress, an emergency egress, before we even submitted our building plans. And there were conversations we had that, overall, plan for this phase of construction is actually enhances the ability to get in and out of the building. Right now, if you want to get out of that building in the back, you have to go down a flight of stairs, into the dark, back up another flight of stairs to get to the back exit in the parking lot. That actually is being dealt with here in the tiering and leveling of the floors, where you can just immediately go up onto that stage and straight out of the building, as well as out on the Main Street side. So I think we do try to, we know it's an issue. We are concerned about the safety of our people. And so we even talked about, can we do the sprinkler system as long as we stay under a certain number of occupants? In the next phase, it's a kind of a cart and a horse thing for us. Hundred fifty thousand dollars to get a sprinkler system doesn't do anything to help us serve the people, the reason for being there, except it's in a safe environment. But we're already at the place where we can't continue to serve the people we have on a slope floor problem. And that's when we discovered the code, that says that you can't have more than two hundred seats. That's the variance request, and we stand before you today.
Appreciate that. Yeah, thank you. I guess the, oh, to start the discussion, I mean, it's really hard for to overlook safety concerns, you know, and not having even the sprinkler system, not necessarily that that would make a difference, but not having that is an additional concern that, you know, there's several concerns here, I think.
Yeah, I appreciate the intent of the church to, to make it a safe space, to provide better egress and, and look at all that, but I, we, we can't overlook the, the, the code here and how, it's pretty, pretty black and white to me.
I guess I would ask, well, I guess, any other comments before we? No comments? Well, I would, we'll go, is there a motion to deny?
I would be moved that we deny the application for variance on the finding that it does not meet
Establish.
Some of the conditions spelled out in the request.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the variance request for five eighteen North Main. All those in favor, say yes, yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no, motion carries. I would, yeah, I think you guys are doing great things. I think it'd be good to get with staff and see what could be worked out with, not necessarily this variance request, but overall, for the safety, because that is concerning. Having more people that should be, than, should be in the building. I think it'd be good to get things worked out and figure out a, a good solution together, if we can. Thank you. Okay. Item seven, update on the comp plan progress. Rebecca?
Yes, thank you. So this is just a quick update to all of you on our city comprehensive planning process. As you guys remember, we went out to an R F P, and we had a small selection group of which a couple of you are part of, and we're moving forward. So you, hopefully, you've heard all this before, but I wanted to make sure that you all tonight and tomorrow, the city commissioners, heard it as a kind of an official update. So as you remember, our consultant is Olson Consulting, and they've been working with us on our new steps of the comprehensive plan. This initiative has been named Newton Next, and it will update the previous plan, the Re-Newton, which was developed in twenty-ten. Updates, communication, and important information are going to be shared on their project website, which is called NewtonNextPlan.com. Community members are encouraged to sign up to, join the Community Voices team as an avenue to provide insight into the plan in your attachments, and you'll see them around the city building and in other places. There's actually postcards that have that information and Q R codes to be able to sign up and apply. A scientific community survey will be going out in the next few weeks, which are random sample of households through paper copies in the mail and an online version that's available. And then we're starting off with our in-person events here quickly in October. They're going to have a visionary workshop with that Community Voices team, so the people that are interested in serving and apply through the portal and are selected. We'll be meeting at Fire Station Three on October seventh, and there's going to be a public open house on the eighth. We're expecting another pop-up event in between that time for people to come and give their opinion and their priorities and tell us what's important to them. The city commissioners, and you all as planning commissioners, are individually invited to events that are geared toward city leadership. One of those, which will be a city leaders workshop on October seventh from ten to noon at Fire Station Three. Hopefully, you've gotten that personalized email. If you haven't, we're expecting it to come out shortly, so please mark the time on your calendars. And then, any further updates, if you don't hear it directly from us from staff, please keep an eye out on that project website, that NewtonNextPlan.com. I know Justin's been working incredibly hard to manage all the pieces. He's doing a great job. He just has me do these for the fun of it.
Thank you, thank you. So we're, all, all the planning commissioners will be invited to the?
Yes, to that, to that leadership.
Seventh one?
Yes. Do you know, Justin, if they've gotten those? I know they sent the emails to the city commissioners, but I think they're still getting the planning commissioners.
I, I hadn't seen one yet. They, they requested that email by the twelve, so I'm guessing it'll be after the twelve that they'll hear from.
He'll hear from them, so.
Hear from Olson? I did get my survey in the mail.
Oh, you got a, you're the.
I even returned it.
Oh, you got selected in the random sampling.
Yep.
Very good.
Any questions for Rebecca? Any old business? Any new business? This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, we'll begin the Newton Historic Preservation Commission meeting for Monday, September eighth, two thousand twenty-five. To start the agenda, we'll consider approval of the July seventh, twenty-twenty-five meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the adoption of the minutes.
Second.
We have first, we have a second. All in favor, say approval, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Approval.
Say no for anybody that doesn't want to. Motion carries, review of the six oh one North Main.
All righty, so what you have before you today is a project at six oh one North Main. You may know that as Prairie. You'll have your district nomination details that's discussed as the front facade and its current covering by those metal panels and street-level storefronts. It's a rather modern addition to the, to the building, as you may know. The project description is asking for the repair and replacement of all the glazing opening on the east and south-facing frontages, both existing and covered transoms, to be opened and restored. The panelized system on the storefront is asked to be removed to expose and repair the existing facing brick, and the interior renovation that they're asking for will be limited to removal of that entry sofa and exposure of the previously covered transom windows. You can see all of their items in their application. As you remember, the ordinance that, that oversees this talks about repairing deteriorated architectural features that, if they are, need to be replaced, that they should match as closely as possible in composition and design. Staff has reviewed the application and sees a lot of that in this piece from the materials that are expected. And then the newer items, like the glazing and the track system, do fit our design guidelines. They would be modern additions, but they'd be modern additions that fit within our design guidelines. So staff is recommending approval as the project will not damage or destroy a historic resource, and also approving the application as presented, as it fits within the local guidelines. But if there's any modifications or questions you have, we're happy to answer. And the applicant is here, if you wanted to ask any questions.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Jacob Karst with Schaefer Architecture, two fifty-seven North Broadway.
Aaron Geddick, twenty-six, ten Roosevelt, North Newton.
Anything you'd like to say on the project?
It was one that we expected to come a little bit soon. We had been helping the Gaddards a little bit with some stuff on, on Main Street, and then the storefronts kind of came to our attention as things started to tip on that south side. As we had already been studying in the structural integrity of other buildings on the property, we already had a code plan that we tried to get together and compile and get a glazing package together that is respectful of the existing conditions.
Commissioners, have any questions for the party?
You guys figure to move pretty quick on this, then, given the nature of the structure?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for the staff, for Rebecca? Seek a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I would move the approval of the request.
Second.
Second, we have first, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same. Motion carries. Want to review, let's see, review of five eighteen North Main, the gathering?
All right, so now you get to hear about the same property and project again. This project review will be two parts. There's an interior and an exterior. So you've heard a little bit about the interior. We're going to start with the exterior on this project. As you know, from their status, that it's the oldest continually operating theater in Newton when it was initially surveyed back in the nineties. We know that it's, air of significance is as a theater and the theater that was there previously as well. So those are just items to keep in mind as we move forward. Their exterior request is to clean, polish, and refurbish the existing steel decorative frame that surrounds a cedar siding on the Fox Theater facade and repair the structural substructure that is attached. We have not gotten details on what that would look like for the structural portion of it, but this is a recommendation that has come to us through various meetings with the ship on what to do with this exterior facade to keep it as important as it is, as you might remember. This is one of our few mid-century modern facades in our downtown district. And then in the interior project, you've heard a little bit about this already in your previous role this evening. They're asking that we level the auditorium floor by adding two additional levels or terraces with steps in between each level and build stairs from the new floor to the stage and add a railing between the levels for safety. They wish to install exit and emergency lighting and add a wall between the back and the front of the stage. Just like the other items that we discussed, you were looking if there are those deteriorated architectural features, that they be repaired rather than replaced. We're seeing that with the exterior project. Or when you're replacing it, I'm certain that some of the cedar plank siding will probably be replaced in that portion of the exterior metal frame as well for the front facade. So be like with like, as we do, and bringing it back to those areas of significance that we look for. The rest of this is, in here, shows our standards of review for an interior pieces. Your packet's a little large this evening because staff did go through for the last large interior renovation, which you see, there's an approval in twenty-fifteen and twenty-eighteen, and the project took a little bit of time to get off the ground, and that we look through certain items. Some of the items that we look, look at in particular for standards of review, and remember that our ordinance mirrors those of the U S Department of the Interior, is that every reasonable effort shall be made to provide a compatible use for property that requires minimal alteration of a building, structure, site, object, and its environment, or to use the property for its originally intended purpose. The distinguishing original qualities of a character in a building, structure, site, or its environment shall not be destroyed. The removal or alteration of any historic materials or distinctive architectural features should be avoided when possible. C, all buildings, structures, and sites shall be recognized as products of their own time. Alterations that have no historical basis and that seek to create an earlier appearance shall be discouraged. Changes that have taken place in the course of time are evidence of history in the development of a building, structure, or site in its environment. These changes may have acquired significance in their own right, and the significance shall be recognized and respected. E, the distinctive stylistic features or examples of skilled craftsmanship that characterize a building, structure, or site shall be treated with sensitivity. F, deteriorated architectural features shall be replaced rather, shall be repaired rather than replaced whenever possible. In the event replacement is necessary, the new material should match the material being replaced in composition, design, color, texture, and other visual qualities. Repair or replacement of missing architectural features should be based on accurate duplication of features substantiated by historic, physical, or pictorial evidence rather than on conjectural designs or the availability of different architectural elements from other buildings or structures. G, the surface cleaning of structures shall be undertaken with the gentlest means possible. Sandblasting and other cleaning methods that will damage the historic building materials shall not be undertaken. H, every reasonable effort shall be made to protect and preserve archaeological resources affected by or adjacent to any project. And I, contemporary designs for alterations, additions to existing properties should not be discouraged when such alterations and additions do not destroy significant historical architecture or cultural material, and such design is compatible with the scale, size, scale, color, material, and character of the property or neighborhood. So that comes from our ordinance. Then we have our downtown design guidelines, which mimic many of that. Why, they talk about preserving the floor plans, avoiding subdividing spaces, avoid making new cuts in floors, drop ceilings. Commissioner Kelsey, I think I'm a little, I don't want to overread this too much.
I know.
But where this all came to is that in reviewing their request to tier the floor, staff would recommend denial of that portion as the sloped floor is what shows that it is an auditorium and a theater, and that is its defining characteristic in our history of the building, in our downtown district. That's its contributing historic characteristic. So splitting the project into two, for the exterior facade work, staff recommends approving it as it does not damage or destroy historic resource and approving it as it meets the local design guidelines, which mirror those Department of the Interior standards. But staff recommends denying the interior as the theater floor is integral to the core function of the building. And moving from a non-sloped floor does seem to eliminate that function.
So are we dealing with these as two separate items, then?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want to hear from the parties again on this?
If you want to.
Do you guys wish to speak anything on the exterior? I know we heard the interior, but the exterior?
We brought a gentleman here who would, would be leading this project. Why don't you just describe for him, tell him who you are, and then describe what we're planning to do with the exterior.
You got Daniel Tennyson from Vanguard Custom Metals in Wichita, Kansas. Everything that was outlined there is, is what we'll be doing, would be just cleaning and polishing the stainless, removing any tarnish or varnish that's come over the years. There's been some tape on the side of it, you can see it on the south elevation. We won't be changing a grain, it's polished look, right? So it's going to come back with natural oxidation that's on there over the course of its life. That probably cannot be changed, but it will be cleaned. The way that it's attached to the building now, and the reason you don't have any details is because it's, it's hidden, it's mechanically fastened either into the facade of the building through the brick or through the subframe. So either it's fastened into the brick and the subframe runs on top of it, and then that's cleated to it, and then on the backside, it's very similar. I don't know, I haven't seen it until I see it and explore, and I can't tell you what, how I'm going to fix it back. It will be fixed back with hidden fasteners the same way, either through a lead anchor system or a cleated system.
So it'll be removed?
It will be removed.
The whole, that's right.
That's correct.
That's removed, okay.
That's correct. And the stainless, we will mobilize twice, we'll, we'll mobilize once to remove it, and then build a secondary subframe, and we'll clean it in our shop and then bring it back out and install it. The only change to any of the stainless that will occur is, if you, if you see the building now, you can notice that there's gaps in, in, in the vertical components, it's fallen in several spots. We're actually going to attach, through the use of a splice plate behind it, right? That will hold those together and won't allow that to happen. That's pretty common in coping cap fascia, soffit systems, right? And the only thing that will be changed on the job is the upper component, that's the coping cap that comes down over the stainless, that is a full replace with like material. It has a, what's called a two-inch Armaco or double lock on it. It's, it was done by hand back in the day, they bend it to a ninety, bend it down, and then bend it over, right? I'm going to replace that, and I'm going to put it back the same way, with not, not the primitive tools that they use, but it will be the same lock. And then we'll cleat the front side to an ES-1 certification, which gives you the UL-90 wind uplift rating, and it'll hold it together. And, and the last thing on that is on the south side of that, it, it, there's a hole in it where it actually isn't attached yet to a cleat, we'll, we'll be end up end capping that and fastening that in the same way. So that's all the work that we have on the facade.
And I think what prompted all of this analysis is severe windstorms last spring, you know, sixty, seventy mile an hour winds came down Main Street, and we lost some pieces and impacted the wood as well, the cedar that's up there, and we got a few pieces off and looked at it and what was supporting the cedar, and you can talk about that in here as well. But we've made temporary, we just added a lot of screws to hold it together, but the cedar is totally rotted. I mean, it's like cardboard. And, and then there's several of the metal pieces have come down and others are loose. Safety says we've got to do something here.
Sure.
And so you might talk a little bit about the cedar piece of that, that look and feel's going to be the same, only it'll be new cedar.
Right, new cedar, yeah. Will the cedar be coated or pri, or would be?
Stained, yes, sir.
Stained, it'll be stained?
Yes, sir. And the, the only thing on the cedar that would, that would need to be explored when we, when we take it back off is what they would call the sleeper, or the secondary substructure that, that the cedar's actually mounted to. It's not mounted directly into the brick, it has wood sleepers underneath it out of cedar as well. When I saw it, when they removed it, initially, they looked like they were in very good shape. I, I proposed to replace them.
Are those cedar, are those treated?
I believe they're cedar.
Probably not treated from back then.
No, sir, I, I believe they're cedar as well, and, and what's under the stainless as well is, is what I believe is also cedar nailers, given the age of it. I, I don't know that, but I would, I would bet my, you know, bet money on it.
Good guess.
Right, it's a good guess, that's right.
Rebecca, are there any stain color, yes or no's within the project itself?
For this project, it would just be asked to be as close as similar. We did not receive any colors in our application, so I couldn't determine on something, but we'd be looking for a match.
Do we know what the original color was of the, was it just a clear, probably back then, no stain at all?
I, I don't know.
If you look in spots, it looks, we don't know, but it looks like it could have been painted orange at one point there.
Yeah.
Way up top, so.
Which wouldn't surprise me either.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my, my guess is it's probably just weathered cedar.
Pictures though, right? You would have found that in the history, right?
The coloring on it is, is a, I'm not going to, I'm not going to try to color match.
It's hard to see it in black and white.
Okay, that's all I care about.
So, yeah, we'd be, we'd be looking for a similar.
Thank you, guys. Commissioner comments? Now, we make, do we have to make, we still have to make a ruling on the interior, correct?
Right, but I would, I would suggest taking a motion on part one, part A, on the exterior project.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the exterior facade, that it will not damage or destroy historic resource.
Okay.
Second.
Second, we have motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right. Now we'll move one for the interior auditorium recommendation. Do we need to speak about that? Since we kind of heard that in the other meeting?
Yeah, I would just support staff's comment that it's, that's sort of the defining characteristic of the building is the, of the interior is that sloped floor, so.
My only question on that is, it sounds like there must have been some work done already where it was partially leveled. How did, how did that get through?
So if you, yeah, we, we can certainly go through that some more. If you look through your packet, there is, let me see the page number. Page thirty-six of your packet. You'll note, the first portion of your attachments were from the last major interior review that was taken to the Historic Preservation Commission. There's been some minor items since then, but this is the last major one. And this talks about the project description here. They do talk about the small amount of the new deck portion, the construction of a sound booth on the flat deck, and they went through the piece at the time. At that point, between staff and the Historic Preservation Commissioners at the time, they felt like the small portion of the flat did not, was not enough of character-defining removal to count.
And that the size was specified and everything?
Right, right. And so, and that's what you saw earlier, well, actually, yeah, that's what you see, I think, still above, no, that's got the tiers on it. It was the first one that you saw, which is the, I think God break can get us back there, with the hundred and fourteen fixed seats, still in a theater configuration, and these kind of table, high-top table type pieces. So at, at the time, it was considered to be majority theater still feel.
Gotcha, makes sense.
Yeah, we just, and we added in the render, you'll see in the, in the first part of your agenda packet, then also the renderings that they had submitted at the time for that auditorium renovation and the, kind of the, there you go. So that, that's what it was approved at, at the last interior.
Any other discussion, commissioners? Seek a motion?
I move that we deny the approval of tiering the floor as it damages or destroys the character of the building.
We have a first?
I'll second.
We have a second? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, everybody. Motion carries. Do we have any old business?
Just a quick update for you all. We are still waiting from the Office of the Shippo for our Historic Preservation Fund grant agreement. We were hoping that we would have gotten it on this agenda, but they are a little short-stopped at the state level, so we're still waiting on the agreement. But we're hoping to get it signed and get working on that project. It's been a while, but just as a reminder, this would be an expansion to our digital walking tour, that would include some recorded podcast-style items. So I just wanted to give you that update. We are waiting on the state for that.
Okay. Any new business? We're adjourned.